Thanks to everyone for coming. First thing we'll do is approve the minutes from the last meeting. So if the Board hasn't had a chance to look at them, be sure to do so now.
A second.
We have a motion to approve the minutes and a second. Any conversation? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Are the minutes... Public comment.
For coming.
Okay.
Thank you. Isman.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon.
It's good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Wish it was a different subject. If I could ask your indulgence, I have a statement from Abby Land, who's the president of the Turtle Creek Homeowners Association. I'd like to read that on her behalf. She can't be here. And then I'd like to make some comments of my own if I could. This is a statement from Ms. Land. "I have read over the revised plans for the development of Applewood Trace and the report from the town, and I am concerned by the fact that the only mention of our schools in the plan report is the suggestion of a walkway connecting the proposed community with Surf City Elementary and Middle Schools. My concern is not with accessibility to the schools, but the fact that the schools simply cannot handle the influx of students that will result from the development of a community of this size and at this time. Town residents have said repeatedly, and I have said repeatedly, our schools are dangerously overcrowded. No one will benefit from further overcrowding them by building a neighborhood of 691 homes and bringing more children to the area and into the classrooms. It will negatively affect the health, safety, and welfare of Surf City children already here and those who desire to call our town home. We cannot possibly continue to serve our children and provide them with the education they deserve when there are some classrooms that currently have 40-plus students." Think about that, 40 kids. None of us, I think, would like to spend a day with 49-year-olds in a classroom. "Our community is not prepared. Our town is not prepared. Our schools are not prepared, and the school district is not prepared for further increases in population. Many of us moved here years ago for the incredible schools, but their performance grades continue to slip, and with them go the performance rates of our children." I should mention that Abby let me know today that she spoke with this new superintendent, who asked that the town go slow on any further development, and I would urge you to be in contact with him before you proceed on this matter. Growth is inevitable, but it doesn't mean it has to happen right now, and it doesn't need to come at the expense of families who are already home here at Surf City. We love our small-town feel. It's worth fighting for. The time for more development in our area is not now. We must allow the town and our schools to catch up with the growth we already have." And then, Mr. Chairman, if you could indulge me for a few moments, I realize I'm going to go over my time. The proposal here is essentially the same as what you recommended unanimously be denied last fall. If occupancy in Applewood Trace matches the town average, now 3.4 people per unit according to the Census Bureau, this development will be home to more than 2,300 people. That's about 60% more than the current population of Surf City according to the 2020 census. If just 16% of those residents are school-aged, 5 to 19, again, that's the current town average, we will have 375 additional students. The bond issue that was approved last fall will provide new school facilities elsewhere in Pender County, not in Surf City. The help we need is years away if it comes at all. Applewood would add nearly 1,000 trips per day to auto traffic on Lagerhead Boulevard, a residential street that often doubles as a playground for our kids. That's an average. Common sense tells us hundreds more will use Lagerhead as a cut-through to US-17 during the tourist season, when kids are most likely to be out and about, and traffic routinely backs up on Route 210 between 17 and 50. Every visitor's GPS will show them the alternate route. We already have sinkholes in the streets in Turtle Creek. I shudder to think what's going to happen when we get this kind of additional traffic. And I should mention that we're in some discussion now with the town about repairing those sinkholes. We still have important and unanswered questions about wastewater treatment in this development. As best as we can...
Can I have a little more time?
Briefly.
Thank you. "As best we can determine, there is no other membrane bioreactor plant operating in Surf City, certainly none owned by an HOA. Mr. Logan wants you to trust an HOA as yet unborn with the safety of our community. As Councilman Fowler observed when Applewood was before the council last fall, some smart people will be moving in, but I don't know that we're going to get any wastewater treatment managers or people able to oversee the running of that plant. Just 48 hours ago, in this room, town council adopted a new comprehensive land use plan that classifies the Applewood Trace property as mainland residential and lists multifamily housing as an undesirable use for property in that class. Nearly half the proposal before you, 324 units, is for multifamily housing. Reflecting in October on how council viewed the Applewood plan, Mayor Batz said a development of this size is not what council intended back in, what, a decade or more ago, when it approved the original plan for Applewood. It surely cannot be what you want under the new plan, given the language about multifamily homes being an undesirable use for this property. If I may borrow a phrase, this plan is nothing more than a lift stick on a pig." Please vote accordingly. Vote no. Thank you.
Ms. Linda.
Good afternoon. My name is Linda Sastar. I'm a native of North Carolina, and I've lived in the Turtle Creek community for the last five years. I am opposed to the development as it is proposed. The development being proposed is basically a rental community. Out of the 691 units, only 81 of these are single-family homes. The remaining 610 units are rental units. And yes, the landlords on these units will be paying property taxes, but the renters who will live there, they have no vested interest in this property. These renters will be using our beaches, they'll use our water, they'll use our streets, our schools, and our landfill. The average family generates approximately 95 pounds of garbage per week. At full capacity, 691 units will generate 65,000 pounds of garbage per week, which is over 32 tons of garbage. The traffic nightmares that this development will create on Highway 210, it's been brought up many times, and we still do not have a clear answer on how it will be alleviated. The 81 family, single-family unit homeowners, or the HOA, are they to govern the entire apartment complexes? I mean, how does that work? In five or 10 years, when these rental units start to show wear and tear and become rundown, how's that going to affect our property values? I urge you, please don't approve this development as proposed. Do it for the current residents of this community, the school, the children, and our neighborhood. Surf City, in my opinion, cannot sustain the kind of growth proposed by this development. Thank you."
Mr. Joe.
Good afternoon, members of the Board. My name is Joe Torre. I live at 115 Leland Way in Hampstead, which is Turtle Creek. My first question to the Board is, what is wrong with the original plan for this area? Approximately 15 years ago, this came before the Board, and they developed a very sensible plan. It was single-family homes, and I believe there might have been some townhouses. There was no rental units. The plan made sense. I don't know if the Board is aware of, but in Turtle Creek, the only way we can exit and gain entrance to the area is through Lagerhead Road. That's it. That's our only way in and out. It's a dangerous road. It's virtually like rolling the dice when you leave our area. Now we're asked that they're going to put hundreds and hundreds of more high-density units into an area. It's just going to increase the traffic in that area. And another item is that apparently the North Carolina Transportation Department realized that there was going to be a big problem at Lagerhead Road. They've recommended that property be added, I guess, either by eminent domain or what, in order to straighten out Lagerhead Road and attach it to a road south of 210. It made sense, but apparently that's not possible because the developer does not own the property. But the point is, we still have the problem at Lagerhead Road. What are we going to do? Now I got to have mass number of cars? I've heard estimates of over 1,000 cars in these units, all pouring in on Lagerhead Road. With the problem here, it's high density. It's not only faced in this application, but in others also. It's going to bring high taxes, high problems with the school, and possibly water problems. We've asked for a hydrology report in the past. We've never received it. Everyone seems to like the original plan, except Mr. Logan. Mr. Logan has a plan here that's going to make big bucks for him, okay? He's going to get the dollars, and the public is going to get the pain and the higher taxes. I urge the Board to turn this proposal down outright and to recommend to the council that it also be denied. Thank you.
Mr. Tate.
Good evening. I'm Will Tate, and I'm one of the residents of the community. I'm from 100 Cornell Lane, Hampstead, North Carolina. But I'm one of the property owners and also the representative for our community that this development is being impacted upon. There was a previous desire that this definitely would be denied. However, over the last year, with the fact that the community feels that eventually something's going to come, and it's going to move into, on the development phase of it. But the changes from what we've been heard was that they were going to move the condominiums in a different location, and that location was going to be where they felt was going to be most of the traffic, and also was going to have a more impact on the traffic and the speeding of that community. However, they felt if they had stayed with the family homes along that area that's going to come out on Manhollow Church Road, they felt that if that was the way they come, that it would be more easier if the residential homes were there, because that would bring, there'd be more kids there, and people would be a little bit more concerned about that. But if you put the development there with the townhouses and things of this nature, it's a little bit of a different view there, because you've got different kinds of people, different ages of people, some without families who just doesn't work. And I can witness that in Dogwood Lakes where I live. Prior to the opening of the Dogwood Lakes area on the other side, we had a lot, we now get a lot more traffic. Not bad, because these are most of my family homes. But I do know from experience myself, from not only developments in the past, that when you put apartments as if they have these called EVOL, you're going to get a lot more traffic, a lot more different people, a lot more different type driving. So I'll tell you about the recent change about the opinion. The community feel that eventually something's going to come through, but they were really concerned about the fact of the relocation of the condominiums and things of that nature. But if it do come, they were saying that where it comes out on Manhollow Church Road, that they also talked about, what the gentleman talked about earlier, where that was, what was the development when the other development down on 210 was initiated, coming out on 210, out on 17 was. Apparently, the state denied that. They didn't want additional traffic coming out there. So that also put a cripple to the, of course, I forget the name of the gentleman just talked about. It did cripple them for exit, just like it did Dogwood Lakes until they authorized... Can I get another 30 seconds? Thanks. Well, basically, appreciate it. So my point here is that the community is not really against it coming in, but the adjustment to either, they prefer it not to come, I'll be straight up with you, but if it has to come, to be aware about what you're going to do for the traffic, you're dealing with elderly people there who's living on fixed income, and they just don't care for someone to come in and increase their life worse for them. Thank you.
That's the last person that we had sign up. We did have a couple come in after, so I don't know if you want to see if anybody else wanted to speak, but that is the last person I have signed up.
Anyone else has any comments? Okay.
Could you please come sign up on the sheet so that we have your information and then speak?
I was actually involved. I worked for Dilzheimer Communities before it was purchased, and I worked for DCNC LLC. And my family and I purchased 12 lots in the Edgecombe community, and we've been actually looking forward to this development since like 2008. We annexed all our lots into the town so that we could dedicate the streets, and the developers of Applewood Chase have agreed to make the improvements that DCNC agreed to initially. So we've been waiting for 13, 14 years for this property to be developed, and we've been paying town taxes since that point in the hopes that it would be developed and we would be able to dedicate the streets in Edgecombe. So that's kind of our perspective, is that we are for the development. We own lots within the city, and we annexed in with the intention of developing those lots at Edgecombe. And obviously, the guy has a right to develop the property within the existing zoning, so it's a question, I guess, of whether he's going to be permitted to amend the zoning. But I don't think there's any issue with the property being developed itself. It has always been the intention that that property would be developed. So that's our perspective.
One more person, Mr. Law.
Good evening. Am I going to take too much of your time? Because I've already given you all the statistics about the school system previously in the previous planning meeting. But I just wanted to bring to the forefront again, as an educator at Surf City Middle School, the impact that this neighborhood is going to have on our school system. We all sitting here already know that Surf City Elementary has already reached its capacity. We know that Surf City Middle School, we're probably going to be at capacity going into next school year. We have four pods on order that are going to be delivered to the back of the elementary school, so we're already out of space. We have portable classrooms coming in. The density that this development is projecting to put into place will just put more stress on our school system. As previously was stated, the bond did pass, and we know that we are not getting a school in Surf City. Okay, it's all in the southern part of Hampstead to kind of funnel everything down and kind of redistrict down that way, which is really not going to impact us much here in Surf City. Class sizes, we're already looking at, you know, 35 to 37 students per class, and I teach four of those per day. The state only caps, you know, K through two classrooms for teachers, you know, at 18 to 20 students, looking at fourth and fifth grade teachers, they're already at 37. If this development goes in, we'll be over 40 per classroom. We have, if you walk into a fourth, fifth grade classroom right now, kids are stepping over each other's backpacks, list goes on. Okay, it's not safe, number one, and in turn, in the long run, the quality of the education is going to continue to decrease. And the reason why people move into Surf City area is because when they Google the school district, our ratings are high. And if we want to maintain our ratings to be high, we need to do things now, like minimize the amount of homes that are going to go into this neighborhood. Okay, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for all your comments. We certainly listened to your input. Thank you. Okay, Amy, do you have something you need to present to us or get us started?
I'm not going to read a lot tonight. My staff report has not changed significantly. This will be about the third time you've read through it, so y'all are pretty well-versed in it. The main things that I want to point out, that the changes are the changes that were With the connection to 17, that has been moved from the "we don't agree with" list to the "agreed to" list, so they do plan on making a connection to 17. There will be a small piece of commercial out there, but there would be a connection, and that would become the main entrance. There would still be that connection over to Edgecombe to provide the interconnectivity required by the ordinance, but there would also be that connection to 17. The water was a concern last time. Based on testing and whatnot, Pender County did release them, so they now will be served by Surf City Water, meeting that buyer requirement. And then, the multifamily development was moved to be closer to that, direct access to 17, to try to funnel that traffic out of there. I mentioned the traffic survey in here, or the traffic impact analysis. That will have to have some modifications done to it once, if it moves forward, modifications will have to be done. The traffic impact analysis and the improvements that were recommended were based on just the two connections. They are not based on that third connection. So that would be, we would work through that process with DOT, as they are the main review agency on that, and the driveway permit goes through them, so that would be worked on. That's really all I'm going to say. If you have some direct questions, I'm happy to answer them. Mr. Collier or Mr. Frank, one, would like to do a brief presentation. They also have their traffic engineer here this time with any questions, and is that all the extra people? So there is a traffic engineer here, the site engineer and the attorney. They would like to do a small presentation as well tonight.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board. How's everyone tonight? Or this afternoon, I guess it is still. Our presentation will be reasonably brief. We've gone through Applewood Trace with you at length the last time, but I certainly want to make sure that I talk through as many things as you need to hear in your evaluation and tell you the things that we have done and that we are doing to conform with everything that the town needs, as well as what does the community wants. So we do know Surf City is a great town, and we've heard it here this evening. I hear it from, through all of the residents as they speak. I hear it in the Board as you guys speak, and in the council speaking the other night when I was here at their meeting. I know Surf City is a great town, and that's what Applewood Trace wants to be as well, as a part of that great town. We know that you guys have had tremendous growth. Since 1980, the census says, you've had about 800% increase in growth. We don't want to be a burden on all those things. We are trying to bring the ways that we are overcoming our project and any of the traffic congestions, schools, those kinds of things. I'll talk through those in just a moment. You know, the big thing is, if you say the statement that if you don't build it, they won't come, was probably not really a true statement. We always talk about if you build them, they will come. If you don't build it, they won't come either. They need different types of housing products. You need a way to have something more than the same all the time, and that's what Applewood Trace would bring, is some, it does bring multifamily. It brings some single-family rental units, and it also brings single-family for-sale homes. So it brings that product mix. That brings other people into the area. That can bring new neighbors, new friends, new citizens, all of those things, just like anyone else that moved into the town. We want to make sure that Applewood Trace has afforded that same type of opportunity. We know your charm and your culture. It's a great place. It's a great place to go. Everyone wants to go to a beach town, and Surf City is a great, great beach town. So we want to make sure that we maintain your charm and your culture throughout Applewood Trace, just as the other neighborhoods within the Surf City community are. So at the recent community meeting back in January, we heard that, of course, schools, they talked about these this afternoon as well. Schools are a predominant issue coming up. The roadways and the traffic congestion and how the roadways will be managed is a big issue, and then also the wastewater treatment plant. And it primarily has ownership-type things, how the maintenance will be done, and what affects to the environment. And I think Mr. Isman spoke to those a little bit earlier. We have those same concerns. We have those same thoughts. Everybody and the future residents of Applewood Trace and our team, we want to work with the folks in the town. We want to work with the folks, the citizens of the town and the town itself, to help overcome some of those things, to help work through it and give the answers and provide any of the expansions and the roadway infrastructure, municipal utilities, all those things. We want to be able to stand with you as a team member, rather than it being just a plug in a hole. It's beneficial to all of us. If we all work together, we can overcome a lot more. If we have some of the, you know, the town behind us, the development, you have tax base and other things that can help with a lot of the, with a lot of the things that go on as a development progresses. So we're not going to solve the school issue tonight. I understand the gentleman that just spoke about his fourth and fifth grade. I don't want to be in a fourth or fifth grade class with 30 or 40 kids in them either. My daughter teaches elementary school, so I understand the 2022s and that age bracket. So I couldn't do it. I can't tolerate that much of kids all the time, but I do understand his position as well. But we're not going to solve it here tonight. All we can do is kind of help everybody. We know the school bond was passed. The school bond's been put on hold for a little bit as they make some decisions, but in the end, there is money there that's going to be funneled to something. I won't dare speak to what it goes to, because I don't know that, but I know it's there, and it does have some overall effect on Pender County schools. We ask that Applewood Trace gets afforded a lot of those same opportunities that the citizens that have moved in in the last five, 10 years were given. They were, a project was brought forward. They were reviewed and reviewed upon the merit and upon the code. and upon the code and the ordinance and the land use plans, and they moved forward and folks moved into those homes, and they made homes here in this area. And that's what we're asking for, is that our residents are able to do the same things. We want to be good residents, and we want to be there to work with everybody as everything moves forward. I do have folks here today that can answer wastewater questions, traffic engineering questions, general engineering, land planning, those kinds of things, if the Board has those type questions and wants to go through them. So what have we changed? The things that have changed is generally and predominantly, we have moved the location of, I don't think it's going to hit that, the single-family homes that are now in the southern portion, southern portion as this map sits, it's not truly south, but the southern portion of this has moved from the northwest quadrant to the southeast quadrant. The single-family and duplex community that would be Forrent State in the center in the same location, and then we have shifted the apartment community and multifamily up in the northwest quadrant. We've added the street that has that direct connection all the way out to Highway 17. That's up in the upper right corner of the picture, and I have some blowups of this in a minute to make it a little easier to see. It will have a circuitous route from 17 all the way down to 210. It has been designed in a way that you've got to make several rights and left turns, so it's not a straight-through road. I mean, yes, folks can learn it, yes, folks can do it, but it has been designed in a way that it's not something you're going to want to drive many times to wind through to go from 17 down to 210 or vice versa. So we hope that some of that helps to alleviate a lot of the traffic congestion that's on Lagerhead today. It gives Lagerhead Turtle Creek folks a way to, another way to get in and out. I know they only have one entrance and exit, but even the previous development had the same, giving them an extra exit out to 17, so we're trying to provide that as well. We have, our TIE has been approved, but we do have to go back in for revisions with the third access, and in general, it's not going to change any of the outcomes, other than distribution of traffic. We will put more traffic, we want it to go out 17, that's going to be best for everyone. As was mentioned, the apartments are on the northwest quadrant, so I would want those apartments to go out to the north to 17 and then turn right and go either north or south, depending on the direction they need to go on 17. We will be improving that intersection at Man Hollow Church Road. It will become an RCI, which is one of the U-turn movements that's being built on 17 these days, so it will be a much improved intersection from that U-turn and left-turn movement. It'll have leftovers dedicated in and then U-turn movements to come in, but you can't go left-out. There is an existing U-turn just up above our other direct access to 17. We have reduced our unit count, granted, not by much, but it is 3.54 units per acre. The max in our area is four, so we are certainly well underneath the threshold that's there, that's provided by the county. And we did make that commitment to establish the reserve fund account for the wastewater treatment, so that it has that long-term maintenance and repair-type money that it needs. So, all of these things we've heard from you guys before, we heard it from the Council, we've heard it from the citizens, and we've tried to work with all those to make these changes and get Applewood Trace to become the project that I hope folks like. Density for density's sake is not a good thing. It never is a good thing. When you put density just to have density, it's never good. But when you put clustered density in, that gives open space around it, it gives protections around it, then you have very good planning, and that's what we've done here. Our density has been clustered together, which is what a PUD does. The PUD that's approved before, it's really not a PUD, it's just a longer housing development. This is a PUD because it has diversity in density, it has diversity in how the things are clustered, where they're clustered, how they're getting in and out, and those type things. So we want the property to be the true PUD that it's highest and best use, at least in our opinion, is, and that's what we believe Applewood Trace brings to the table. We are providing 72, almost 73 acres of open space. A lot of that is in wetland areas, but those wetland areas are wooded and vegetated and provide those natural buffers that we can't rebuild. If I built just an apartment community right off 210 and it was 20 acres, most likely I'm clearing 20 acres and trying to plant back two-inch trees. This has mature woods that stays with it and keeps that buffer, the natural protections that everyone wants from the cluster-type developments. Stormwater management is being handled on our property onsite, taking it, taking all of the stormwater runoff that's coming in and treating it and handling it and then releasing it at a much slower rate. We are designing our stormwater ponds to handle the hundreds of storms. We are designing all of the stormwater infrastructure to a 25-year, which is what is above the town's standards and what DNR requires, and then the basins themselves and the street to keep the water from flooding and having to spread that causes the hydroplaning, that goes to a 50-year storm event, so it further reduces the stormwater impacts that would have on the town, on the streets itself. We are extending the public water after we were released from Pender County and that the agreement that was with them. We do have the wastewater treatment plant. That's going to be an onsite treatment plant. I may have misspoken, the type of treatment it is, an MBR plant or not MBR plant, and I've got our wastewater treatment expert here that can talk through it, but our treatment plant is set up to put infiltration into the ground, and it's treated to the highest effluent levels that we can treat things to. It's treated in a contained plant, and then it is put, then it is into the ground, it goes straight into the groundwater in the center of our site, there in the center of the, of the one and two-bedroom rental, one and two-unit rental homes. So our roadway network, we've designed it throughout Applewood Trace, and it's designed, as I said, to try and keep folks from trying to cut through and making that cut-through traffic. No one's neighborhood wants that. I don't want it in my neighborhood, and I'm sure Turtle Creek doesn't want it within theirs either. The off-site roadway improvements I mentioned, we've got, we've taken care of those from our property and looking outside of our property from the traffic study. It also includes some improvements up at 210 and 17 where the Lowe's Home Improvement Center is. I mean, it's not just localized to us. The DOT did recommend, or at least put in their draft back to us, to realign Lagerhead Boulevard and put a signal on Highway 210. We don't own that piece of property. DOT's position is, okay, go ask them, can you buy it? And if you can't, then we'll waive the, we'll waive the requirement. But we don't, we don't own it. We've told before, if, you know, it becomes a signal at Lagerhead in this existing place, that's something we can discuss, but to go and buy an additional piece of property to realign the road, to put a signal in against Becky's Creek is a bit over the top for anyone, and I'm sure for those folks that don't want me to buy their house and move them, and move them out to another location. So our developer, our team, all of us, and the current residents of Surf City are in this for a long-term duration. We're not going to have Applewood Trace built overnight. It's a seven-year build-out, in best case, from the time we start construction to the time the last houses are sold. So you're not going to get 691 units here next week. There's a year's worth of planning and permitting that goes into it, and then the construction, seven to eight years to build it out, so it is not something that's going to tax your schools day one. It will, obviously, any increase has a burden, no questions there, but we will not do it day one. It's going to be a prolonged thing. With the school bond, the way it's being staggered out, maybe that helps in some way, and then if ours come in and they're staggered in, maybe you've gotten some relief from some of the school bond money. I don't know the answer to that, but we can certainly continue to help try and work with that through the school system and the town. So, I guess in closing, we respectfully ask that the Planning Board recommend approval to the Council for our project. We want to move forward on this journey. We want to keep things moving forward, not continually come and, come back and ask for slightly different things. We want to afford our future residents the same opportunity to live, work, and play in the town of Surf City that's been given to the past residents and the past new folks that have come in. We do appreciate your time and your consideration. I thank you. I know it's, it's a lot to take in. I hope you've had a chance to read your packages, and I'm certainly here to answer questions. I also have my team that can answer specific questions on other disciplines as they need to. But again, we want to be a good team player, and we're trying to work with everyone to resolve any of the outstanding issues. So thank you very much for your time.
Anyone have any questions for him while he's at the podium?
Six. Seventy-two existing permits, so you minus seventy-two, that's how many would be left?
Anyone have any other questions for any other members of their staff that are here? Traffic? Sure?
Yeah, Dave Ward, I've got a question about the traffic numbers. Am I reading this correctly? We've got 2,161 additional movements over this, over the previous approved plan of 2006.
I can't speak exactly what you're looking at, but the, are you talking about traffic over a whole day?
The traffic generated.
The staff report, okay. Yes, and that's in, that's in, over a day, an entire day. Yes, sir. That is a, that's a daily traffic volume.
Amy, is traffic humps permitted now or not?
No, sir.
No?
No, sir.
Fire Department doesn't like them, the police department doesn't like them?
They're not favorable towards traffic humps, bumps.
Wilmington, so I was just asking.
For traffic calming, there are other things that could be done that aren't speed humps or speed tables, those kinds of things, so. There are things like narrowing of the lanes, you know, enough that a truck wouldn't have to go over, but you can put the, they call them like chicanes, but you basically just take the outside curb and just kind of bring them in a little bit. It just makes the road narrow so that people have to, you know, people will slow down to kind of navigate through that. There are four-way stop signs, you know, that make people stop as they go through. As Richard mentioned in the presentation, the plan itself has a lot of traffic calming in it, in that it is very circuitous if you're trying to cut, I heard the term "cut through" from 17 to 210, but if you look at that plan, it's designed with roundabouts, with very circuitous sort of roadway network you'd have to take to get through there, and the idea is to make it longer, longer travel time, you know, to go through this area. That would discourage people from doing that. So there's already some things that have been done to help with that.
In figuring your traffic flows, what generates the traffic? Nowhere is it not just people, but the people are going somewhere. Where are those somewheres that you see them going to?
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a good question, and the, you take into account a lot of things with the, with residential units, such as this plan. You take into account where are they likely going to work, where are they likely shopping, you know, those kinds of things that people would be going to, and one thing about the traffic study is it considers the typical rush hour, you know, period, so the highest traffic periods, and that's normally in the morning during rush hour and in the afternoon. And those two times of day, if you think about where we all go, you know, during those time periods, it's usually to work or to grocery store, shopping, you know, those kinds of things. So it takes into account where those things are that they're trying to go to and assigns the traffic out to the roads and driveways that they would use to get there.
Mr. Ward, we also look at the directional split of the existing traffic. So we look at the existing traffic counts and look at that somewhat to help us figure, if it's a new development, we look at the directional counts of what's there existing and use some of that to help us determine where they're going.
Where does that information come from?
So they have to do traffic counts themselves, which is just a one-day count, and depending on whether there are signal warrants or whatnot, it's different hours and different things, but they have to do traffic counts. We can also look at some of the DOT's information on their traffic counts that they take yearly and compare to make sure that they're kind of in line with each other and that they, that they make sense. But we try to make sure that the counts are taken during reasonable times, so we don't take them on Mondays and Fridays, because that's not your standard day. We try to make sure that they're taken during school hours and not during Christmas break or summer break or, you know, or those kinds of things. So in this traffic impact analysis, we are looking at those peak hours during a typical work week.
And that was great, Amy. And Amy and team and DOT and team are very involved in this. This is not something we just kind of make up and say, this is what we're going to do, we're going to do it. We go back and forth on that to make sure we all have input in where, what we think this is going to do and where we think these folks are going to go to and from.
Derek Arthier, do you count during the four or five months of summer vacation?
We did, this particular project, we did, it was non-summer when we did the counts. I believe it was April, maybe, when we did the counts, April or May, maybe, when we did the counts. It was not during the peak summer. I think the summer, the summertime is a, and what we're trying to look at, too, is balancing when this development's going to generate the most traffic and when it's, so that's what's going to have the highest impact on the road, is when it's generating the most traffic. And, you know, the, obviously, the peak summertime traffic is usually in the evenings on a, you know, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, the heaviest times, and the, but this particular development would, would generate the most traffic coming from this site during a typical weekday morning, afternoon period. So, and that's what we're trying to look, when is the heaviest time, what's the heaviest burden this development's going to have on the road network? It's what we're really looking at with this study.
On Saturday on a summer vacation, and you'll see some crazy traffic.
Oh, I've, I've, I've actually been in that traffic. I've contributed to that a few times.
That's the 17 past Harris Teeter.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, yep. I've been in it.
Do you see cut-through traffic from 17 in the summertime being generated of any significance?
You know, I'm not going to tell anybody that it's not going to happen. I think, I think there is, anytime you connect two streets, it could happen. I think what we want to do here is try to make it as less convenient as possible for that to happen, and also try to help, try to help some of the other roads and intersections around to sort of keep, if we can make those function a little bit better, it would also keep people from wanting to cut through. But, I mean, like Richard said about solving the school traffic, or school situation earlier, I mean, there's not one development that's going to come here and solve the traffic problems, you know, in town, it's just not going to happen. But what we try to do, what we need to do, and our job is, is to, any development's job is, is to take care of the traffic that they generate and try to make things a little bit better for everybody else. And that's what we're, that's what we're doing with these road improvements that are being done by the project, trying to make it a little bit better everywhere else, and then to solve that cut-through traffic potential, we're trying to design the site, and we've, you know, throw some ideas out even, you know, as we get more and more into it, to try to limit the potential for cut-through. I mean, the development doesn't really want cut-through traffic either, right? I mean, but, but if there's a, if there is an accident, wreck, car crash or something that shuts down, you know, an intersectional road, this becomes a route that you could, that could be used, you know, in that situation, and so I think that's important to not overlook either, so.
Are these town-owned roads?
So the conversation so far has been that all roads, except for the, potentially the spine road, would be considered with significant additional conversation based on the bridge structures, but the remainder of the roads would not be, they would all be private streets. So there is conversation on the spine. I don't think the town supports that at this time because of the bridges that would be placed.
The spine road is the link out to 17?
Yes, sir. You can kind of see it going there, and then it turns left and goes through the traffic circle and goes back through the apartment.
Is that essential to the whole scheme of things?
There it is. There it is.
Thought it was.
The, the connection to seventeen is essential to get, as, uh, Rinald said, for their traffic to get it out. Yes, the connection is very important, the connection is incredibly important for my fire department, um, because you have too many homes back there that aren't connected. So it's very important for emergency services and whatnot, as a private street though that's dedicated for public use, it would still be open for police, fire, um, and all of those things, it wouldn't be private, like you could close it and put a gate across it, it would be private in that it would be maintained by the homeowners' association.
No toll roads, huh?
No toll roads.
I assume that includes the bridge?
Bridge would be maintained by the homeowners' association.
What is the problem with it from the town standpoint?
Replacement of a bridge in fifty years is expensive and we don't, we don't have staff set up for that. We don't have staff that inspects bridges, they require yearly inspections and things, we don't have staff and a department that's set up to take over large structures.
Well, I thought it was privately maintained.
They would maintain it, there's always the potential that if they met the, um, DOT standards, that they could look at being taken over by the DOT.
Couldn't the town require engineers' report every year?
I would have to look at how we would, would go about that. If it's, I mean, if it's not ours and it's the homeowners' association, it would be their responsibility to maintain and, and do those.
Right, but I mean, we got other conditions in here, we want to see.
Definitely discuss that prior to go in, uh, moving forward to council, we could have additional conversations.
What's the current thought as far as material for the bridge?
We have not seen any design on the bridge at this time. Mr. Collier, would you like to talk to the bridge?
There's a couple of schools of thought. If we go concrete, which is a great bridge, um, DOT may take the roads over, they hesitate to take roads within the towns unless they're, they're numbered roads, so I don't know they're gonna take a subdivision street. Um, if the town's not interested in owning a concrete bridge, then we may put timber bridges in that we, we can build and they are more, more fitting to the area than is a, than is a concrete structure, and it's a little bit more pleasing from the, the wetland analysis, it still gives more light underneath it to keep a lot of the wetland plants still active and growing. So, it's not been determined, I guess, is, is the direct answer, but those are the two options. If the town wants to take the road over and on it, we'll build the concrete bridge for them, but I, I understand Ms. Combs' position.
What's the shelf life of a timber bridge?
Somewhere on, is somewhere on the order of a fifty-year kind of a timeframe too with regular maintenance, and they're all, it's all sea, um, coastal kind of timbers, so they are, they're at about fifty years.
When would this road be built? Because I know at a previous meeting, some of the residents were concerned that, of construction traffic going through the neighborhood.
Right.
Would this be built, built at the beginning or?
We, we will build the road at, at the beginning, the, going up to the crossing of the bridges itself, that's purely dictated on how quickly I get through the core, uh, but we will, we will build the road up as far as we can go and make all of the connections as quickly as possible because we want to have those same type access in and out, uh, for the emergency folks and construction traffic and others as it goes through, but to build the bridges day one for the construction traffic to only go on is probably, is not gonna happen in the very, very beginning.
What is the timeframe on the core?
I'm sorry?
Do you have any idea what the timeframe is with the core of engineers?
It's somewhere on the order of nine months and getting the final approval from them. Man, that's, that's in a good world. We have the delineation done, those things are already agreed to, now it's an agreement on the height and how the, how the, what the alignments are and that we're crossing it at the least impactful location and the sun gets under the bridges and those kinds of things. The, the, the bridges must be designed at that point too, because we've got to provide them the same things you guys are, are needing in the end to approve that, to approve that street.
Richard, when you gave your original presentation, did you say you had a blown-up version?
I do, I've got a couple of different blown-up pictures, so this is, um, this is a blown-up aerial, uh, a, a picture of the, the, uh, single-family homes. You see to the south of the picture, bottom of the picture is existing Turtle Creek, uh, that generally mimics, uh, some of the design of the previous single-family homes that, that were in there. Going up page, uh, to the left, the next will be where, uh, the, the, the one and two-bedroom units are, the, the for rents, uh, they are all, you know, singular units, uh, but they would be for rent units. The large green, uh, in the center is where the, uh, that is the wastewater treatment disposal area, um, and that is, will also be, uh, be used as a recreational type field as well. Um, you can see going through as the main Lagerhead Road kind of winds through, you've got to go through several different, either four-way connections, a couple of left turns, a, a roundabout, um, there, there's lots of things that slow the traffic down, and if I may, if I can walk for now. In the areas, in here, in this area there, there's on-street parking as well, so, sorry. Some of what Rinald was speaking of earlier in traffic and, uh, in narrowing it down, when you have on-street parking, that's another thing that helps slow cars down. We, we don't want fo- folks going through here at even twenty-five miles an hour if we can help it, that's not good for anybody. Uh, you know, we want to make sure, we want it to be maintained, that it's a good, safe speed for all and it's, we're trying to slow that traffic down, so it's not that cut-through that, that no one wants to happen. And then finally, above that, above the power line, you can see the, the apartment community, I mean, the buildings are, are well-spaced out, there are three-story buildings, there are a couple of two-story buildings in there, um, they are away, as far away and as, from everyone as we can get them and still maintain that, uh, that main street out to seventeen, and then that street, again, that connects, we've shown at least pictorially what a small little retail, commercial-type use would be up closer to seventeen with the parking area, and then, uh, the picture on the left is the intersection of, um, Man Hollow Church Road, and it depicts the right, uh, right-turn lanes that are required, the, the acceleration lanes, and then the closing of, uh, the median to become left, leftovers in each direction.
Where is the school path?
The school path is, if I may.
Who is, um, going to be responsible for maintaining that path?
I would presume that it is the HOA that would be responsible for that.
That'd be timber as well.
I'm sorry?
That would be timber.
It would be timber, absolutely, yes, sir.
Has the disposal field got repair unit?
It does, yes, sir. The repair area is, I'm gonna go and point again. Which is about two times as big as what, uh, as the area for the actual disposal, it's the disposal area itself.
All suitable soil.
Yes, sir. They've all, we've already had all of the soils worked and hydrowork done by Mr. Ed Andrews.
Are there companies out there that maintain these treatment plants?
Yes, sir, there are, there, there are multiple.
Homeowners' Association would have to engage one of those.
That, that's what we believe is the, is the path that will be taken, is that there is a company engaged that, that maintains it, operates and maintains it. I, I don't expect, um, Mr. and Mrs. homeowner to maintain a treatment plant, that, that is not in any way, shape or form what we are referring to. I, I know you're in a bit of a quandary, uh, we certainly want to provide whatever, whatever information that we can, um, to make sure that, that you're getting the information that you guys need to make a decision with. I, I respect that it's not an easy decision all the way around, uh, but we do feel that the changes that have been put in place and the, and the documentation is there, we've, we have made the concessions that I think were requested of us, and, and we certainly want to move forward, uh, and want to have a project that everyone's proud of, not, not just, it's not all about dollars and cents all the time, there's a lot of things of, you know, you want to make sure that you're good neighbors and you're good citizens at the same time, so. Just let me know if you have anything else, and I, either I'll come up and address it or I'll have one of the, the other experts do it. Thank you.
Amy, could, would you mind, um, going over the town's reservation with the proposed plan? You said you had, they don't recommend it as is, as it, as it is right now? Just clarifying.
So we had stated that a conditional district zoning, that staff recommends that if approved the below conditions be added to the approval. You know, we've gone through the process over the past two years of the new land use plan, um, the, we had two, over two thousand respondents to our public survey, which y'all are all aware of because you were, you know, a part of that process. The town's vision in two thousand and five seems to be very different than the town's vision at this time as a, as a growth pattern, and also with this project having been a previously approved plan of a smaller density, um, it shows that that was the plan of the town at the time, and it seems to be consistent with the current land use plan. So our biggest reservation, um, is going to be, you know, the density and the, the desire of our current residents not to, to move forward with this being a rezoning, um, versus a by-right development. So that's gonna be, you know, our biggest concern is, is that if planning board is comfortable with this, and moving forward, you know, we recommend that these conditions be added because we think they are needed for a project of this size.
And it looked, and the, and the original plan was four hundred and twenty-six minus the seventy-two, um, for?
Hundred and twenty-two.
Four hundred and twenty-two minus?
The seventy-two that were built, which left us with three hundred and fifty.
So they're asking for, to double that, correct?
Approximately, yes, sir.
Approximately double that, okay.
How much was in multifamily on the original one?
Is there any townhouses, no, no?
There are townhouses.
Well, I, this density.
Just one?
I can't read it. They're phase seven and six.
Approximately a hundred and ninety, I believe.
Yeah, it's.
One eighty-four. I want to respond to the conditions, but I don't want to interrupt Mr. Ward's question.
We have a hundred and four, forty more. Higher density. Well, you could almost say that, uh, for rent, single-family stuff is pretty high-density too, because it's, chuck a block full in there, it's no big sideline setbacks and stuff as I see it here, it's almost impossible to tell at this scale.
My name's Sam Frank, uh, I represent the applicant as well, and the total density for the project that we?
I'm talking about density for the, for the, for rent, of course.
Sure, um, compared to the approved, the existing, yeah, um, and I don't know that, I don't know that figure, how it was designed on the plan that has currently been approved.
Mr. Ward, can you lean forward? I can't hear you.
Can't hear me?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I was relaxed.
Sorry. Thank you.
I've seen some developments that have the sidelines that far apart on high-density single-family stuff, and I just wanted to have this compared to, it's almost more akin to a townhouse than a true single-family like we got in the development now.
It, it is more, uh, more townhouse duplex-like, uh, but it is still.
Density-wise, anyway.
In, in terms of, of spacing, um, it still has, all meets all of the, the, uh, building code spacing requirements and those kinds of things. I think the, the, the idea of, of, as I mentioned earlier, the, the, the PUD zoning, the underlying PUD zoning, the, the previous plan is a subdivision, there is no PUD in it, how it became a PUD, I don't know, there's no mix of densities, your PUD, your PUD ordinance creates three different types, you have a low-density, a medium, and a high-density. Maximum we can be with those in a PUD is six, or is eleven units per acre, at, over the entire PUD, which is clustered development, that's the intent of it. We are at under four, and we are under what the two thousand and five land use plan had in density for this area that was then called mainland, uh, mainland transitional, residential, or some, some, I think that's what the phrase was. Um, so we are, we are well within those bounds, um, we're, we're not trying to become a, a high-density project. I understand that you look at a, an apartment by itself and everyone says that's high-density, it's, and overall land areas against the project, this is a, this is not much more than an R-15 in density numbers, not, not in, I've cookie-cuttered an R-15 subdivision, but in, in this, that you get two-point-five units per acre in an R-15, we're at three and a half, so, you know, we're, we're one unit more on a per-acre basis than, than is an R-15. Your R-5 zoning is higher density than this, your R-10 zoning is higher density than this. We are trying to use the PUD rules as they're outlined and provide, that, that's why we've come for a conditional zoning. We're asking you for your help in doing this and, and making sure that we have it, uh, as, as well as we can, but that is what a PUD does, that's what it's there for. I, I'm not sure, in some of the things I read in the, the future land use plan, great document, it's a wonderful document, but you have discounted half of your zoning codes by saying you only want single-family residential. That's fine, I understand that. Um, so, a PUD does the things that we're showing you, um, and it's giving you densities that are, are as low as, um, uh, other, other zoning cat classifications, so I think that's, that's where we believe we've met the former land use plan completely, there's no way we can meet the new one, it says no multifamily, uh, but we're also not obligated under that one based upon when we were, uh, we were in, in process, so. Sorry, Sam, that was your thunder.
No, no, no problem. I actually wanted to respond to the conditions that you asked about, so, staff proposed specific conditions, recommended this is consistent with, um, the, the current applicable comp plan, um, and proposed specific conditions therewith, uh, we are agreeable with all of those conditions. I do note that the last one is no longer really relevant, um, regarding relocation of the multifamily to the northwest quadrant on the site plan because the multifamily is in fact at the northwest quadrant on the site plan. That said, it doesn't bother us at all if you're inclined to recommend that one. Ms. Combs noted, uh, a, a subtle reservation, uh, in that statement where she identified this as being consistent with the comp plan regarding the location of the multifamily, I wanted to speak to that just briefly. It is as close to the highway as we can accomplish on this site, and you can tell by the, the layout on the site plan that we've located it not only in the northwest quadrant, but as close to, um, to Highway seventeen as we can, which is responsive in part to the comments we heard from you and, and that we heard from staff since the prior application. Since we're agreeable on all of the conditions, there isn't much to discuss there, but if you have questions for me about it, I'm glad to answer them.
Justinette Veen, as you reminded me, the repair. Justinet Bean, as you reminded me, the repair sewage disposal area cannot be used for multifamily as opposed to where it is now, maybe swap the two?
We wish that it could, but the soils where the multifamily is are just not conducive, yes. There were two, two large places. I mean, the area that we have in repair is certainly prime real estate. We wish, in many ways, we would be able to go into town sewer and not need to build a wastewater treatment plant onsite. If so, then we could do exactly what you were saying, and then maybe that would make everyone happier, but that we don't have that today.
Any other questions, comments?
I think I share the concern of the town and our residents that, you know, the existing plan that was approved in 2006 was for, you know, 426, and they're coming in asking for basically to double that on the existing with an additional, what I count, 341 more units. And, and it is a conditional rezoning request, so as part of the town, and I agree with Amy and I agree with them, I would make a motion to deny this request based on the fact that I still believe that the density is just too, too much for that area and too much for the, going forward, and, and within accordance with our new land use plan that we spent so much time doing the last couple of years. So I'm going to make a motion to deny the conditional district rezoning request for Applewood Trace at this point.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion for denial for the conditional rezoning, and we have a second. Any further conversations? All in favor of denying the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to denial? So the planning board recommends that the conditional rezoning be denied. Okay.
If anyone would like to leave, now would be a good time before we transition into the next item. I see some people starting to get up.
Thank you all for coming.
Does that conclude me?
My whole thing is that when you're a developer and you buy a lot that you've already been approved, you can't assume that you can just bull over people.
What are you to do in this history of life, you're doing it all?
It's fine. They did make some good improvements, huh?
Ready?
I'm ready.
All right, just move on to item number five, the subdivision, Accolade.
The Accolade subdivision came before y'all as a sketch plan review for the Preserve at Pirate's Cove. As y'all are aware, our ordinance says that you cannot have a similar name, so we reached out and discussed with the developer that Preserve at Pirate's Cove was very close to the name Pirate's Cove, so they have come back with Accolade as the new name request. This is basically the site plan that you saw in the sketch plan, but it's now gone through TRC and meets their requirements. So just to refresh your memory, since it was a few months ago, I'll read through this staff report. So the proposed use is single-family, it is zoned R-5, it is in the 2300 block of Southshore Drive. So on behalf of American Land Holdings LLC, CLD Engineering is requesting approval of the attached site plan for the Accolade subdivision. Per the subdivision ordinances, any subdivision over two acres should submit a sketch plan review to the technical review committee and the planning board for comment before submitting the plan for preliminary plat review and approval. This review was completed as the Preserve at Pirate's Cove on November 10, 2022 meeting. Based on the direction from the, received by the planning board, we moved forward with this for a preliminary plat through TRC. The background on this, Town Council approved this site as Phase 3 of Pirate's Cove in 1989. The previous developer did not move forward with any portion of the, of this section of the project. Obviously, Phases 1 and 2 are built in our Pirate's Cove. The new project is not reflective of the previous approval, it is a completely different site plan. The applicant requests to subdivide the 15.39 acre property into a 43-lot, single-family residential community with an amenity center as shown on your attached plans. The proposed plan provides direct access to NC-50 or Southshore Drive via a new connection and secondary access to Cutlass Drive. The applicant will complete the driveway permit application process through NC-DOT as it does not meet the threshold to provide a traffic impact analysis, meaning it just doesn't generate enough traffic for that type of document. Preliminary comments have been received from NC-DOT and indicate that the roadway improvements on NC-50 will not be required, just the radiuses and whatnot will have to meet their standards. Cutlass Drive is a private road located within the existing Pirate Cove subdivision. Since this project was a phase of the original Pirate's Cove development, access to the road was retained. The applicant worked with the residents of Pirate Cove to locate the road as close to NC-50 as possible. A sidewalk currently exists on NC-50. The developer will repair any damage to sidewalk that occurs during construction on the two lots that he owns across that frontage. The new roadway network meets town standards by providing a sidewalk on one side of each of the residential streets. We do stop short in the, in the cul-de-sacs, just because the bulbs get so big by the time we put in the fire requirement size, and then with sidewalk and whatnot, so we stop at the beginning of that. The applicant is providing a 10-foot public access easement to coastal waters in accordance with the town's requirements. The town of Sur City will serve water to the site as well as up to 12 units with sewer. The septic systems will be provided for additional treatment. Based on the soils condition survey, it appears that 11 lots will have off-site septic fields, with the remaining lots having onsite septic fields. The development stormwater system will be permitted through the North Carolina Department of Environmental Qualities State Stormwater Permitting System. The developer is currently proposing a stormwater pond, and once that goes through the system, all of that will be finalized. Obviously, it may change slightly from what's on your plan. The applicant has completed a tree and wetland survey. The developer will be clearing for the installation of infrastructure and the amenity center, but will not clear the individual lots. Building permits submitted for each lot will require an up-to-date tree survey and adherence to the Coastal Forest Overlay District. The applicant will work with NC-DEQ for sediment and erosion control permit and any needed wetlands permitting. There appears to be a potential wetland impact requiring permitting through the Army Corps of Engineers. The applicant is responsible for obtaining all state and federal permits before the commencement of the project. Street trees will be provided following town ordinances. Where possible, existing canopy trees will be used to meet this requirement. So if we have old-growth trees that are in that right-of-way and meet that requirement, we will obviously keep those and not cut them down and plant a baby two-inch tree. The applicant will also provide landscape islands in the cul-de-sacs. We will try to work with them on that to limit the spread of those trees. If trees are planted in the island, we will work with them to limit the spread of those so that the fire truck still has access around those islands. The cul-de-sacs were also designed so that our largest fire truck can traverse them. Minor modifications may be made to the roadway alignment to maintain existing trees. Any changes requested will be reviewed by town staff for approval prior to implementation. So we have talked about some slight little jogs if, if we get in there and see that there are some larger trees. The development will consist of roads built to a combination of NC-DOT and town standards. The streets in the development are to remain private. The attached plans set in restrictive covenants have statements noting this. It will be the responsibility of the homeowners association to maintain the roads within, in the development. However, the town will maintain the public water and sewer systems, not the private septic systems, but the public sewer system. Each homeowner will be responsible for their individual septic system. The fire department has completed its review of the site. The roadways have been widened adjacent to the fire hydrants to meet the requirements of Appendix D of the state fire code. So in front of the fire hydrants, you will see kind of a little flare-out where the road goes to 26 foot wide so that in the event of the fire, and we need to hook up to it, we have room. The site is located within an R-5 zoned area of the island as noted on the map in your packet. The proposed project meets the requirements of the R-5 zoning by providing a minimum lot width of 50 feet and a lot area of 5,000 square feet. The town of Sur City land use plan update 2005, future land use map classifies this area as island residential. The proposed, the recently adopted comprehensive land use plan also shows this as an island residential-type area. This use recommends a preferred density of no greater than six residential units per acre. The project, the proposed project provides a density of 2.8 units per acre. The town's proposed comprehensive land use plan also labels this area as island residential with a desired use of single and two-family residential. As noted in the proposed project discussion, the applicant requests approval for a major subdivision with 43 single-family lots and one amenity center. This use is consistent with the Sur City land use plan update 2005 and the proposed, since adopted, comprehensive land use plan. Planning board held a discussion of the sketch plan at the November 2022 meeting. The project has completed staff review and meets the requirements of the ordinance. Staff recommends approval of the project as submitted. And the applicant is here, and his engineer, if you have any questions.
Are you going to be, this is Derek Arthur, are you going to be building all the lots yourself?
We are not home builders, but we'll just be putting in the infrastructure, subdividing and selling the lots. We will have design guidelines in what can be built, and we'll have the recorded covenants.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Lots that are, have the sewer system off-site. I guess, David, that's a pumped system, you know?
They can't, they can't make gravity, that's correct.
I doubt if they can get gravity that distance.
Yeah, I, David Resources is the group that, that we hired to go out and do the soil analysis, and they're the ones that will be doing individual permitting for the septic systems. And for the ones that are off-site, there will be a pump, and what we will be doing is during the time of construction, we will install the pipe from the lot to the off-site area, and then all they'll do whenever they get ready to build their house is actually, you know, put in the installations, but that way they're not going back in and disrupting the road or anything. We're going to go ahead and make, make the connections and stub them out for...
They'll have to put in the treatment system, whatever it is.
Yeah, it, it would be the same as if it's an onsite system, the only difference is that, you know, the spray field is at an off-site location, which will actually give those people a little more flexibility in, in building their house on their lot since, since the area will not be on the lot itself.
In essence, the sewage pipe, the sewer from the house to the disposal field is going on common area?
Right, right. It'll all be within the easements, and it's, it's only a two-inch, a two-inch pipe.
Yeah, right, sure.
So it's relatively small, and actually, you're allowed to put more than one pipe in the same ditch line, so they'll dig the trench and run them all together.
I'm just, I'm looking... Yeah, I'm looking at future maintenance more than anything else, is finding the right pipe, going to the right disposal field, and...
Each pipe will be labeled, as they're putting it together, it'll be color-coordinated for each individual one, so.
And there'll be provisions in the restrictive covenants that the homeowners association can't go tear up that pipe?
Yeah, it, it'll actually be the individuals, it's not going to be maintained by the association. They'll be privately owned, again, just as if...
But it's going across common area, and that's, that was my question.
Repeat that, I'm sorry.
Is some provision that this homeowner can dig up common area?
Yeah, yes, yes, we will have, have that in place.
And I'm still concerned about the road going down next to Pleasant Cove, the entrance road. What provisions are you going to do to keep people in Pleasant Cove from using that road?
We did actually take, take your comments prior into consideration, and from the original plan, we did slide the road over to where we had the 20 feet from the property line at the beginning, and if you notice, as you're going in on the first couple of lots, we swung the road over a little bit, and, and to give us more room for plannings, but, you know, we, we have a pretty intensive landscaping plan that, you know, we'll be putting in and addressing that area.
All the people driving in there will be looking to butt into all those houses on Pleasant Cove.
Any further questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion's carried. Thank you. All right, Williams Hurricane House, Frankie Williams is...
Denied.
Wanted to recuse himself.
I second.
So I need a motion to accept his recusal. All right, do I have a motion for his recruit, recusal? And do I have a second?
I second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Okay.
Sorry, I was making my notes. In your packet today is a request for the approval of a major subdivision. As we've talked about multiple times, even though it's just a single lot, it, it meets a major subdivision because it doesn't meet the minor or minor expedited definition. The zoning map is provided and location map for your knowledge. May of 2022, the applicant requested to subdivide the 11.5 acre tract into two parcels. The property was subdivided to create a one-acre homesite for Mr. Williams, leaving the parent parcel of 10.5 acres. At this time, it is requested to subdivide the property once again to create an additional one-acre lot. Access to the newly created parcel will be via an access easement across the front one-acre lot. Both lots will have an easement to locate septic fields on the rear of the parent parcel. The subdivided lot will access Belt Road via the easement, be served by Pender County Water, and have access to a septic field through easements. The parent parcel is zoned R-10 with the adjacent Pender County zoning listed as residential performance. The proposed subdivision of the property will create two conforming R-10 lots and will be compatible with the surrounding Pender County zoning. Staff recommends approval of the site plan as submitted.
I make a motion that we approve this.
I second.
A motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion's carried. Okay, Amy, what kind of project updates we got?
So in your packet, I have the printed project updates just for y'all to read through. These also go out once a month in the governmental update, and they are also, they may or may not be discussed at, they'll probably be in the council agenda packet for work sessions, but they are updated once a month here as well as on our governmental update. If you have any specific questions about any of the projects, I am happy to, to answer them. The Bishop Creek Phase 2, I think, has created a little bit of confusion out in the world. It is the second buildings of the part that's under construction, it's adding two new buildings. It is not the piece across the road that came into town last year that is on the opposite side of Coretta. We have not received any plans for that larger project yet. There's also a DOT project going on that's looking at... at improving the NC fifty-two-ten intersection, and part of that is the consideration of a quadrant road that would utilize Coretta, um, and the Food Lion access. So that is also going on and creating some confusion out there in, in the public. But that, the ultimate goal of the town would be to connect Coretta all the way to J. H. Bats Road, um, through there, so that, you know, if you were coming from Hampstead or whatnot and utilizing anything, any, at the community center, um, the Wellman Properties or whatnot, you'd be able to come in through the, through the backside and just stay out of that fifty-two-ten intersection and the fifty traffic come in from Holly Ridge during the summer, um, for the beach. So that's being looked at. Um, that's really all I have, unless you have specific questions.
It's the J. H. Bats Development.
Do what?
What is J. H. Bats Development, number four?
Number four. That is the, um, the restaurant that, um, the Peak, the Peak was looking at, on the J. H. Bats. You're thinking about the Ricciardi Site. It's at the roundabout on, um, Tortuga.
Yes.
They are, they are the ones that are on hold right now. They had to change from an architecture to an engineer, to provide engineered drawings.
Architects can provide engineered drawings, huh?
Yes.
I'm looking to adjourn.
I got one comment, Amy. When we get stuff like these site plans, particularly Applewood Trace's stuff, was so small, I couldn't read anything on it. See any way of making it bigger?
Yeah, we used to require that they submit stuff, and then nobody wanted them. So I was throwing away ten sets of plans. So if there is a requested, like, if the subdivision is bigger than a certain thing, then we want to get those plans. If y'all would let me know, I'm happy to have them, to provide those. Um, they have to provide them to us if I want them. I was just throwing a lot away because nobody wanted them.
I understand that. It's a lot of garbage in all these things about planting trees this depth, this far apart, and all this. But I'm, I'm just, the, the site plan was so tiny.
If there's a specific page, if you will, if it's just one page that you want, if you will call or email me, we have a plotter, and I can print out a page here and there. If we want to start looking at the set again, or even if everybody wants a full page, I can have them provide certain things, um, for planning board, so that y'all have them. And you can pick them up, like, the Friday before, when I send out the packet. You can come by, and we'll have them here for you to pick up. You would like to see that with your old eyes, too?
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.
Thanks, Sam.